I'd like to call the regular meeting of the North Huntington Township Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, April 19th, 2017. In order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mr. Hydis.
Here.
Mr. Bertani.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Commissioner Fessenda.
Here.
Mr. Casero.
Here.
And Commissioner Martino. Here. Everybody please rise to the place of leave. The main game is good. I pass it on to my seat. Uh, we have our return.
The citizens of the United States of America and the Republic of the United States stands alone nation under guard indivisible with everything in the justice of our.
To the main game for final. Sign of citizens input if everybody, anybody wants to speak tonight, please sign the book at podium. Remember tonight being, being video streamed and also electronically recorded. First citizen is, uh, Joey Fazengas. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Joey Fazengas. Uh, 11309 Larwin Lane, North Huntington Township. Um, here tonight to address the issue, the drains issue that were having a lot. Multiple times, we have sought help from Commissioner Fessenda since September. We moved into our house that is pretty much a holding tank for the township. However many gallons of tanks that you guys put up here behind the township building. The water's coming down there. Mr. Blanko was there Friday. He said it's supposed to raise the water table. The water's coming up into our basement, through our foundations. Water draining over curves into our yard. We have spent thousands, we have been in this house since August and have spent thousands of dollars. My question, five residents, there's two other ones besides us here that have put fresh drains there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this past week. And not flooded again. We're tired of the water, tired of it. I know one time that Mr. Robinson was down there, I met with him. He said that he met with another one of my neighbors and the neighbor said that he wasn't getting any water, which I was not there. The guy's getting water, it's gross. I'm down with his dad with, raining for his brother. It is not runoff water that we're getting there. It is water getting leached out from your tanks onto our property. And we, we have had enough. The other residents are getting water from Brownstown Road. There's no curb on the road. The creek back behind our house cannot handle water. It's running down existing pipes that are in the ground. Everybody's ground is saturated. We, we saw the fence last year, the fence is gone. We had to dig out everything. We want reenlarge for what we have done to fix the problem because I have videos, I've sent them to Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Fessenda, Mr. Blanko, Turley, and Robinson. It's clearly a drainage problem of the township. So what can we do about it?
What we do right now is we let all the citizens pot. And it will be commissioners opportunity to, um, address all these things. So if you're complete, then we'll go through all the residents and we'll. Okay, thanks, sir. Next resident, Andrea Armbers. Please state your name and address, please.
Andrea Armbers, my home is at 481 Mercer Drive, North Huntington. But I know I get it due to the house being condemned. And my question is, and I don't know, I guess Mr. Turley, what I want is to be able to bring, get my people in there and get estimates on getting it cleaned out and getting it fixed up. I have not been able to do that. And that's what I want. I want that in that house. I haven't been in it for nine months and I'm too old to live with this. That's it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll respond to that. Okay. Next, Sandra Clausen.
Sandra Clausen, 281 Vernon Oaks Drive. And I would just like to request a stop sign in a traffic study at the corner of Larwin Lane and Vernon Oaks Drive. Um, at that corner there, it does not come to a T, but rather Larwin curves onto Vernon Oaks. Um, and it, it seems that, uh, we actually moved in in September. Um, and because Larwin is a straightaway, uh, we, we've noticed that a lot of people are not sticking to the $25 or, I'm sorry, the 25 mile per hour street limit. And instead of slowing at the corner of Larwin and Vernon Oaks, they're actually accelerating around the curb to go up the hill. And there are, there are now a lot of young families on Vernon Oaks. Our home as well as the home next to us have small children. And, um, I would just like to, to consider putting a stop sign where Larwin comes to and needs Vernon Oaks. Then also, um, one issue that we found from that direction is that the visibility of the cars that are coming up Vernon Oaks is, is not very good compared to where cars are coming. I believe that's Huntington Woods Lane in Down Vernon Oaks. At least there if cars are speeding, they can see kids in front of them or not that will have kids going in the street, but, uh, whereas coming from Larwin, there isn't as much visibility of any kids that could be on Vernon Oaks.
Okay, thank you. Next resident, Danielle Taneki.
I am Danielle Taneki and live at 11825 Quarter Horse Drive in North Huntington. I'm here to follow up on last month's meeting in regards to the tabling of the site plan approval for the cell phone tower between, you know, the township and Horizon slash Forebath Communications on Mr. Kerber's property. We were told at that meeting that, um, Horizon and Forebath needed to, you know, reapply, if you will, um, and that there would be a public hearing, um, on a conditional use variance, um, because there was use variance granted instead of that. So I'd like to update on that. I'd also like to better understand, and perhaps this isn't a venue for that, um, but I'd like to better understand why solicitors aren't regularly present at zoning meetings. I understand that there is a specific solicitor that the township has for zoning purposes, um, not Mr. Dice and his associates or those that I know of. And so I'd like to understand why a board that is appointed by new commissioners, um, that, you know, may or may not have direct knowledge of a particular piece of information that's put in front of them to consider that they don't have legal counsel there. Especially my companies like Horizon have legal counsel there representing them. I know in my company, the company that I work for, you know, if I go into a meeting where I'm negotiating a contract, which I do, if I know that my client's attorney is going to be present, then I am, I, I absolutely have to have my company's attorney's present. And so I think that, you know, that is a really important thing to consider, especially when you have those resources available to you that you're actually realizing that. The other thing that I have, um, layered into this is as I read through the meeting notes, um, from that zoning meeting on the number first, and one of the things that was put into, um, play at the very end by Mr. McGuire was that the approval have the condition that the applicant seeks approvals through the planning commission and commissioner also. Um, that was approved by Mr. Flynn, it was seconded by Mr., I know you didn't pronounce my name correctly, so I'm not going to try and pronounce Mr. Murray's.
That's me, I'm saying.
Um, so I, I wondered if that actually happened because it seems that at last meeting, a lot of you, including Mr. Bertani, who represents us in our board, said that they really hadn't a lot of information on this prior to that meeting. Wasn't aware of it, except for maybe in a meeting at dinner that you had with Mr. Kerber. So I was curious to see if the commissioner had in fact approved that based upon a motion by Mr. McGuire. So that's it.
Excellent, citizen input. As far as the citizen input, and first one is, uh, Mr. Fazegas dealing with, uh, the drainage issues on Larwin and Lane.
Yeah, I'd like to tackle that to start, maybe, maybe, uh, ask Andy, possibly might give me some assistance on it. But they were down at the property, I've been there before in the past, and Mr. Albert's, our public works director, has been here for a lot of years. Um, two sets of homes, there are, there's a set of homes that are on Larwin that in essence, they're backyards or brownstones, but you probably know where they are, you can see them when you drive by. I think they do get some water from Brownstown Road, that's probably run there for 50 years. So they may have some issues they need to address themselves, has nothing to do with North Huntington or water that, that we have. It would be the states and that's something they may or may not want to address. If you folks that have been on the board for some time know that a lot of times Pendott has cross drains, they don't put curbs on roads. That's something they can decide whether they want to, you know, address or not, so. I'm not sure if any of the other residents that are here with Mr. Fazegas live in either any of those homes, but that's something they need to, they might need to do on their own. Concerning his house and his neighbors that live on the opposite side of Larwin Lane, if that makes sense, opposite of Brownstown, for the handful of commissioners that were here, we built our stormwater detention facility, the townhouse a few years ago. Um, you recall the issue we had with flooding of a house on the opposite of Larwin, Larwin Lane, the opposite of where they live, a house owned by Patrick's. And ultimately, we decided to put a detention system because we thought that was the right thing to do, slow the water down. And of course, if we were building this building today, we would be required to do that, but when it was built, there were no stormwater regulations in place. So the commissioners agreed to spend that money, and I think that was the right thing to do, we had engineering on that, it wasn't Mr. Blanko, but he's certainly familiar with what we built. And we did that. I'm going to, I'm going to say a few things, but I want Andy to speak as an engineer, someone to civil engineer, that I would consider an expert in stormwater management, one of his primary roles here. I don't think there's anything that we built that is causing a problem for these residents, that just seems counterintuitive. The water's going to the same place, a creek, in a slower fashion, so I don't even remotely understand that claim. With Mr. Albert being our public works director for well over 20 years, I don't believe we ever had a complaint about water drainage at that house. Um, I don't know if you just bought the house in August or July, I don't know what your disclosures were like on the real estate transaction, but we've never had that as a work order. In fact, when Mr. Fessenda brought this to my attention, it was back in September or August, I talked to him about the string behind your house because years ago, there was a concern about that creek. I think Mr. Albert's familiar with that, Mr. Turley, the question of who owns the pipe, one of those ones again that commissioners are very familiar with. It's a creek, it's not a drainage, it's a creek. So we've never had that complaint over the years, so I'm not certain much transpired. From our perspective, we discussed internally, um, putting some additional curbing in along the roadway. If the concern is water on occasion goes over the curb, if there ever had any rain in that, then it might. Um, we will do that, public works will do that. I'm not sure if that's the solution to the problem, there's a groundwater issue here, probably has nothing to do with that curbing. But we put curbing a lot of places, and the township where people think on occasion water might go over the curb, we'll worry about that, you know, we'll do that. So we will do that at some point here in the future, that's something the residents are still interested in. Andy, I know you've been at the site, you have been involved in this a lot, because Bob Robinson, you know, Bob is doing some, is also doing engineering for us, Bob's bent into sites, I've asked him to look at it. But I think Andy's familiar enough with the location, also familiar enough with the problems we have with Patrick and what we did, and he can give you some additional insight from his perspective.
I would just add that the detention tank, which is at the end of our parking lot, it's not a tank, it's a, it's an infiltration gallery, uh, does indeed reintroduce the surface runoff into the groundwater table. I would take issue that the intent is to raise the groundwater table, the intent is to recharge the groundwater table. But the site on Larwin has to be 40, 50, maybe even 60 feet lower in elevation than our parking lot. There is no way in the world that introducing water at the townhouse property is going to create a wet basement on Larwin Lane. The water that's in the groundwater table will reach out, that, that groundwater is what feeds and creates stream flow. There is a stream channel that runs from behind the townhouse down to and then underneath Larwin Lane. If, if that groundwater recharge wasn't taking place, that spring would dry up. So the water that's flowing in that stream is what comes out of the groundwater table. It doesn't stay underground and travel half a mile and then suddenly show up in somebody's basement. It would come out on the ground surface, feeding that stream, adding lower elevation. We were there, I don't know whether it was Thursday or Friday, you said Friday, uh, and you were in the midst of digging a trench that was about two feet deep, and there was standing water in that trench. It hadn't rained since Monday, and the rain on Monday was not a hard, long prolonged rain. So what we have up here should be empty within a day and a half, two days at the most. I, I just can't fathom for a second that it's that water that's causing your wet basement. And I do know we've never had a problem or a complaint from the prior owners about a wet basement. They did complain, I'm going to say six, seven years ago about the stream in the back, uh, so we had dialogue with them, and at no point did they ever come to us and say, boy, while you're here and you're looking at our wet basement, that never came up. So, and, and the system up here went in four years ago.
I would say so.
So if, if that was causing a problem, it would have caused it sometime prior to your ownership of the home. I just have a very hard time drawing a connection between our infiltration gallery and a wet basement on your property.
Current DEP regulations, Andy, require infiltration.
Current DEP regulations want you to completely absorb the, uh, the two-year storm event.
That's the law.
On your site.
So we're doing, doing what, but this is a commonplace sort of way to handle stormwater is to reinfiltrate it right back into the ground.
Correct. Now, if our properties were at the same elevation and there was no gradient, yes, then I could buy that perhaps infiltrating that water into the ground is going to keep that water in the groundwater table and potentially raise it. But not when there's that kind of elevation difference. If you've ever looked over the hill behind the townhouse, it drops off significantly down to Larwin Lane.
I don't think, is there questions or comments on that?
So if they already commented. Thank you. Do you have anything? That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Armbers is here tonight, um, absolutely, I mean, her, her question is, could she have somebody, you know, get, get an estimate, do some work on her house for, for, for some issues, absolutely. Um, we'd love to talk to you about that, I know that actually you were represented by council, by, by, by attorney, but we've had to do kind of attorney to attorney sort of correspondence and we're sometimes not certain to be represented by council, so it sounds like you're not, we'd be more than happy to talk to you about that, at least way to get the, get the property cleaned up and, and habilitated.
John, if I could just add, please don't leave here without giving me your phone number.
Right.
Because our solicitor had contacted Jerome Tierney, trying to reach you, didn't hear anything back. I understand in a letter to Pittsburgh National Bank that over for mortgage on the property, there was no response to that. We just hit a brick wall and didn't know how to reach you. So please, give me your phone number and by all means, we'll work with you to try and get you in there and get the contractor, uh, to get outside cleaned up.
I did, and I talked to the solicitors, I had leave a message on their, on, on their phone, I'm sorry. And I left my phone number with them, but I guess they maybe just erased it and.
Our solicitor?
One of the solicitors that had, uh, sent mail to Jerome.
Okay, would you mind telling me right now what it is, or you okay with saying it out loud?
Yeah, I'm okay. My age prepares.
Excellent. We will be in touch, thank you.
Thank you. Going to, um, Ms. Clausen from Vernon Oaks, I believe you had submitted a work order concerning the same, the same item. So this may be last, towards the fall, until Christmas time, we did get a work order on that. I don't believe, we looked at, in fact, I was there myself, Mr. Turley, our traffic engineer, who normally isn't here with us tonight, I don't believe it's going to meet the requirements for a stop sign. Um, it just won't meet it because of the, the, there's adequate site distance and really what you're, you know, you're looking for, which a lot of us are, is to put a stop sign and to help control traffic speed. It really won't work there, but what we were going to get, and our engineer might have sent it back to us, he gives us a lot of recommendations, and I spent a lot of time reviewing them. He was going to give us a, a line striking plan for that area, because I think, he thinks that might help keep people in the proper lane, because you said the way the road configuration is, I think they might kind of cut the corner there, maybe there's some close calls. He was going to give us that, maybe some signage, so we will follow up on that. I do not believe it's going to be stop sign. He, when we were there physically on the site, he looked at it, has a lot of experience, did not think, did not think it would meet the criteria.
Okay. Could I maybe get a copy of what the criteria is?
The criteria?
Of, of what would?
Sure. Absolutely, absolutely. If I could maybe see after the meeting and get your email letters, we'd be more than happy to send you that. It's state criteria, it's what the state of Pennsylvania uses to install.
Okay.
Sure.
Next is, uh, Taneki, and deal with the cell phone tower.
I'm going to try to remember all the parts to it, I'm going to try to go backwards. The first item is the solicitor for the zoning hearing board, for this board who's familiar, and you mentioned correctly, Mr. Dice's firm doesn't represent them, he's not permitted to. Since they're an independent body, they have their own solicitor, his name is John Camfield. They hire him, they select him, so it's their determination on whether they want him to come to the hearings or not. This board can't, cannot unfortunately require them to have him there or not have him there. We provide budget for it, so if they want to utilize a solicitor, they're able to do that, and maybe sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But I understand what you're saying, but I want you to know that at least this board doesn't have the authority to require them to have this solicitor at the, at the hearing, but they're able to do that. Which your point's well taken, but I wanted you at least to understand kind of how that, how that worked. Um, this board never acted on Mr. McGuire's comments, which were a site plan, which required in front of the planning commissioners and the board of commissioners. I think what he was trying to make clear was just because the applicant was receiving a variance, it was approved, they still had more work to do. Meaning you have to get a site plan approved, the site plan is more than just approval of the tenant, it's, there's other things related, related to it. I think he was trying to let the applicant know, you're not done after you leave this meeting, assuming you get it approved. Whenever the commissioners met last month, that's what they were doing. They were just starting that process of, you know, getting the site plan, it starts with the planning commission, then it goes to the board of commissioners, so that's why they had just seen it, because it had only gone to the planning commission maybe the week before that. So from a procedural standpoint, that's what was occurring. Your first question, if I recall them all correctly, was the issue of the conditional use. To date, the applicant has not submitted that application. We're waiting, we won't schedule a hearing without them submitting the application for the conditional use. We have until our meeting next week, the May, I believe it's May 17th meeting would be our deadline, meeting the board of commissioners to make a decision on the, on the application. And at that point, they'll have to make a decision if there's been no conditional use application submitted, how they want to handle the site plan that's been submitted. And I'm certain they'll get advice from our solicitor, Mr. Dice, as to how they want to proceed with that. But to date, we still don't have an application from them.
So, you know, if I may be clear, so if you don't get, uh, any, any application from that, you have until the 17th.
I think we have until the 18th, and our meeting's on the 17th.
That's right. So. So then it just goes through because nothing?
No, I think at that point, um, and we can start to talk a little bit after the meeting if you would like, but I think what they'll, what this board will do is considering everything that's transpired today, and the township's position that's been, they need to apply for a conditional use, and they have a site plan that's already been applied for, they're going to have to ask Mr. Dice on some legal advice on what they should do. And they'll have to make that decision in May. A lot of different things could happen, it could be approved, it could be denied, it could, we could get an extension from the applicant. It's unknown what will happen, it's quite possible next week they'll apply for the conditional use application, and then there'll be a specific hearing set up for that. But there's about, there's about one more month to go until that time period lapses, a lot of things could happen within that, within the next month.
There may not be a public hearing.
Correct.
And, and just so you know, if there is a conditional use application made, there will be a public hearing, and it's, it's, I'm going to use the term adversarial. He was gonna give us that, maybe some signage, so we will follow up on that. I do not believe it's gonna be stop sign. When we were there physically on the site, he looked at it, has a lot of experience, did not think it would meet the criteria.
Could I say to you, get a copy of what the criteria is?
The criteria?
Of what would?
Sure. Absolutely, absolutely. If I could maybe see after the meeting and get your email letters, we'd be more than happy to send you that. It's state criteria, it's what the state of Pennsylvania uses to install.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to remember all the parts to it, I'm gonna try to go backwards. The first item is the solicitor for the zoning hearing board, for this board who's familiar, and you mentioned correctly, Mr. Dice's firm doesn't represent them, he's not permitted to. Since they're an independent body, they have their own solicitor, his name is John Camfield. They hire him, they select him, so it's their determination on whether they want him to come to the hearings or not. This board can't, cannot unfortunately, require them to have him there or not have him there. We provide budget for it, so if they want to utilize a solicitor, they're able to do that. And maybe sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But I understand what you're saying, but I want you to know that at least this board doesn't have the authority to require them to have the solicitor at the hearing, but they're able to do that. Which your point's well taken, but I wanted you at least to understand kind of how that worked. This board never acted on Mr. McGuire's comments, which were a site plan which required in front of the planning commissioners and the board commissioners. I think what he was trying to make clear was, just because the applicant was receiving a variance, it was approved, they still had more work to do. Meaning you have to get a site plan approved, the site plan is more than just approval of the tenant, it's, there's other things related to it. I think he was trying to let the applicant know, you're not done after you leave this meeting, assuming you get it approved. Whenever the commissioners met last month, that's what they were doing. They were just starting that process of, you know, getting the site plan. It starts with the planning commission, then it goes to the board commissioners. So, that's why they had just seen it, because it had only gone to the planning commission maybe the week before that. So, from a procedural standpoint, that's what was occurring. Your first question, if I recall them all correctly, was the issue of the conditional use. To date, the applicant has not submitted that application. We're waiting, we won't schedule a hearing without them submitting the application for the conditional use. We have until our meeting next week, the May, I believe it's May 17th meeting would be our deadline, meeting the board commissioners to make a decision on the application. And at that point, they'll have to make a decision if there's been no conditional use application submitted, how they want to handle the site plan that's been submitted. And I'm certain they'll get advice from our solicitor, Mr. Dice, as to how they want to proceed with that. But to date, we still don't have an application from them.
So, you know, if I may be clear, so if you don't get any application from that, you have until the 17th?
I think we have until the 18th, and our meeting's on the 17th.
That's right.
So. So then, it just goes through because nothing?
No, I think at that point, and we can start to talk a little bit after the meeting if you would like, but I think what this board will do is considering everything that's transpired today, and the township's position that's been, they need to apply for a conditional use, and they have a site plan that's already been applied for, they're gonna have to ask Mr. Dice on some legal advice on what they should do. And they'll have to make that decision in May. A lot of different things could happen, it could be approved, it could be denied, it could get an extension from the applicant. It's unknown what'll happen, it's quite possible next week they'll apply for the conditional use application. And then there'll be a specific hearing set up for that. But there's about, there's about one more month to go until that county period lapses, a lot of things could happen within that, within the next month.
There may not be a public hearing.
Correct.
And just so you know, if there is a conditional use application made, there will be a public hearing, and it's, I'm gonna use the term adversarial in nature. To the extent that there's a corporate order, a court record made of a conditional use application hearing. Each side has the right to a counsel, when I say sides. The applicant has the right to an attorney. If the residents that are dissatisfied with the decision, they can also bring attorneys. There can be cross-examination of witnesses at the conditional use hearing. And then ultimately, this body here will have to make the quasi-judicial decision as to whether or not they've satisfied the conditional use criteria. Know that of the law, if the applicant satisfies the criteria in your ordinance for a conditional use application, this body almost has to grant that, they have to grant. If they don't meet the criteria, then that would be grounds to deny the conditional use. The applicant will be then given an opportunity, if he chose to walk away from the project or come back in with another application, that would comply with those criteria that are listed in the ordinance establishing what they might be for a conditional use. So, it's a more formal proceeding than you see in just a normal site plan process. I can say to you this, that the applicant doesn't apply for a conditional use application. I think it's the staff's position, tell me if I'm wrong, that a conditional use is in order to be applied for here. And that would be then a grounds to say to the applicant, we're gonna deny your site plan because you never applied for the necessary condition precedent, conditional use. So, that's what probably the advice will be next month, so I'm trying to telegram to you what I think this council's gonna hear, and our council, this board will hear, if the applicant doesn't make the application. But all of what I said could be mooted by his application being made from now and the next month's meeting.
So, they make the application and then there is a public hearing?
And there's a public hearing.
If there's not a public hearing, you're gonna say, well, you know what, we're denying the site plan potentially, because.
The public hearing would be about the issuance of the conditional use.
Right, but they were bringing the use variance, right?
Okay. Use variances are not the same thing as conditional uses.
Okay.
Okay? Conditional uses are heard before this body. The standard approval is much less for a conditional use to get approved than the standard for a use variance. A use variance is very difficult to get approved. Once approved and no appeals taken, that use variance becomes absolute. What I'm saying to you, that after thirty days from the decision of the zoning hearing board, and no appeals taken, this body can't, or can you, or anyone else, take issue with that use variance, that strand. All that they're saying, all the use variance does is says, put that use there. That's what it does.
Right.
Otherwise, it's not permitted because the zoning ordinance wasn't permitted there. But the zoning hearing board will have a reason, granted, by use variance. Once granted and not appealed, it becomes absolute.
So, there's no waiver on that, it's just whether or not you're gonna put the site.
The next, they've got that, that's in their pocket. The next step is for them to come back in and abide by what the council's position is, and apply for a conditional use application. Once they get that approved, then they can be back with the site plan. If they got approved.
Thank you for explaining that, appreciate it.
That's what happens when you do it too many times.
Anybody have anything on this show type? Okay, that's it for Susan. Approval minutes for March 19th, 2017, expected meeting.
Minutes for.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero. Approval minutes for record meeting on March 15th, 2017.
Minutes for approval, second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero. Payment of bills.
Make the motion, we pay voucher number seven-three-nine-nine-seven, voucher number seven-four-zero-nine-two.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero. Staff reports. Anybody have anything for Mr. Elver? Mr. Elver, do you have anything for the board?
I would just like to say, we're trying to apologize, I'll forget. I just wanna thank you guys for all the work you did on Waybreak. Some of you know we had a house that's been flooded in the past, multiple times, and we were able to add one additional drain there. I don't know if it'll solve the problem every time, but it certainly will help. It's a very flat area, it's a flood-prone area, they're a flood plain, we built a flood plain right before they were up to work needed by the federal government, so. A lot of work put into that piece, but you guys know we received some time to go with engineering and quality, and he was involved, Paul Robinson, Rich and Tad, and all his guys, so thank you for getting that done. That's one thing to take off our list, we know these flooding areas that occur throughout the township, there's a handful of them that are recurring, so hopefully that'll help someone.
Rich, I'd like to thank you too, because, you know, we had a problem down here in Warren, and you guys are pressing it. And every time I've called you guys, you've stepped up and worked on everything right away, and I'm sure residents appreciate that.
Well, thank you. You know, fortunately this year, we're able to get a good jump on things based on the milder winter weather that we had. We have a pretty good program going on this year, a little bit more than last year's part, getting our, you know, preparation for the paving program. But we're at full steam ahead. So, everything so far's been a lot better than what I anticipated, and, you know, I'm quite pleased. You know, we've already been working with our hot mix material, which is a plus, and we've been for a couple of weeks now, so, you know. That was a big advantage to be able to get started earlier this season. So, I'm looking forward to a good year this year, and so far, so good, we have a long way ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Elver. Parks and Recreation Report. Anything for Mission River? Agent, under the weapon. Police report. Anybody have anything for Lieutenant Misskey? Right, have anything for the board? Emergency management report. Anything for Dean Compton? Land and Engineering Report. Fire officials report. Subdivision and Land Development Application Report, Mr. Blanks.
There's one plan for action tonight, that's being subdivision six of 2017, J.M. Estates Plan. We recommend that for approval to take two lots and turn them into three.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero. Thank you. Thank you. Solicitor Report, that's just.
Just one action, yes, action, one action, I have an action to approve, ordinance number two of 2017, amending ordinance number 1029, regulations pertaining to outdoor burning and fire.
Action to approve?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero. Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Township Management Report, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, first item tonight is action to approve the March check register.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item two is the March 2017 budget report, if there's any questions concerning that. Item three is action to appoint seasonal public works department employees contingent upon successful completion of pre-employment drug testing at a rate of $10 per hour as follows. Shawn Prines, Daniel Keister, Justin Cole, Evan Peters.
Action to approve? Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item four is action to appoint seasonal Parks and Recreation Department employees contingent upon successful completion of pre-employment drug testing at a rate of $10 per hour as follows. Charles Huss, Sean Bowen, David Kuhn, Joseph Tapp, Devin McCurdy, Brandon Moretto, Ryan Lebsinski, and Zachary Young.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item number five is action to accept a roadway and utility easement from Verna M. Samory trustee for roadway in Ardara Road.
Action to approve? Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item six is action to accept three storm sewer and drainage easements for the culvert replacement project on Willshire Drive from the following property owners. John Marino, Donald and Judith Myers, and Albert and Bernadine Ralph.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item seven is a discussion item, potential action item, it's a request to be received from the Westmoreland County Food Bank for donation. This is a new request, you haven't seen this, at least in my recollection. And that's up for the board to consider, I wrote you a memo on what you and the township had done for that, and also the amount of money we have in the budget for those sorts of things. So, that's just something the board commissioners may want to consider undertaking. So, I'll leave it open for discussion purposes.
John, I believe the state has tapped back on some of the funding for those projects?
Yeah, it was either the state or the county, and I apologize to you for not, which, it certainly sounded like they were losing some funding, and they were trying to make a gap up. It sounded like you and the township took the lean on trying to get some of their funding back in place that they can serve folks in Westmoreland County. And I did put together for you in the memo, I talked to the executive director of the food bank, and he said they service 185 households, 484 individuals in North Huntington Township. And he did specify that's North Huntington, because initially he had given me the 1-5642 zip code, which includes our one, a little bit of Penn Township, a little bit of Hefield. He was able to research that further and give me an exact number, so I thought you may have some interest in how many residents in North Huntington are utilizing it. I think you'd be provided $2,000 in funding, of what we received from them. So, it's a discussion item, you don't have to take any action on it, but this is the first meeting we've had since we received the notice.
Anybody want to do anything left?
Can I make a motion, did we give $2,000 to the Food Bank?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those.
Under discussion. Having been here quite a while, we were faced with a similar situation back in 2004. There was a tsunami and we were, somebody brought up the township donating to the Salvation Army. I forget, it was a thousand dollars, I think. That vote passed, by the way, six to one, I opposed it then, I oppose this now. I think charity begins at home, it's not up to elected officials to use tax dollars, even though there is a township connection here, clearly. And the Food Bank is certainly a great cause. I don't think we should use taxpayer money to do it. I would certainly be happy to collect everybody's money on this board and send it in. That works out to about 142.85 a piece. I already sent them my $150, which my company matched, Verizon matched, with another $150. I just don't think it's appropriate to send that, that's not why we're here, it's to donate tax dollars. And for those who may forget, we actually took a beating in the Tribune the next day by an editorial that said misguided, it was entitled misguided benevolence. And I thought I got a copy of it here. Here it is. Misguided benevolence, when it's charity towns. And the large caption underneath this, commissioners have absolutely no mandate to be philanthropists in the public domain. So, I oppose it.
I guess, I don't wanna echo what Rich said, but I think it's definitely a good cause, I would kinda echo what Rich said. I'd like to see ourselves donate the money instead of taking that budget, I know we have a thousand dollars in there, budget, but, you know, I guess it's kind of a slippery slope because if we give to this charity, and obviously this is Westmoreland County, it's local, I don't think this board should be the one that picks and chooses what charities we give to and don't give to, so we give to the Food Bank, then what?
Years ago, again, to the longstanding folks like Rich, and Dave will remember, we used to get a lot of community sort of requests from soccer, and baseball organizations, and the school, like the school groups that do their yearbook, whatever, and we were, I think, giving out small grants, I don't know if that's the right term, donations, a few hundred dollars here, a few hundred there, and I think at some point the commissioners realized, they were getting so many requests that, like you're saying, it's like, where do you start, soccer, I think at some point the board just said, we're not gonna do it anymore. I keep the thousand dollars in the budget, but it was a placeholder, I think that something comes up, but we probably haven't made contribution from that line item in ten years. Just the thousand dollars. So, that's kind of the hitch, you're right, there were a lot of requests in the past that.
I think we've been working here, you were.
I do want to go with you, Rich's idea of donations from members of the board. I'd be willing to donate.
Maybe I'll pay for a month.
We have a motion, a second before we have to retract it.
No, I'll retract in a second. The idea of us donating to this board.
Additional comments? Item number eight is action to award the bid for the Ardara Road Phase Two project, roadway paving, roadway improvements to A. Liberani Incorporated in the amount of $222,790 and one cent.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
It's for the board's dollars, that project is way under budget, I think we had around $280,000 for that, so it was a great bid number that came back on our road program, our year this year. Item number nine is action to award the bid for townhouse exterior renovation project to Golden Incorporated in the amount of $287,090, which includes the following alternates, A3, A5, and A6. Prior to making the motion, I would look at the board that I did, this project is over budget. We had budgeted $255,000 for the project, those bids came in a little bit higher, we had a few alternates there, but ultimately, if the boards agree with awarding this bid, we certainly are fine from a budget standpoint, because the Ardara Road Phase Two being well under budget, and also the road program, so. When we look at this, look at the alternates, I certainly don't have a concern financially of what this is, but I wanted to let you know that that wasn't over budget from what we included in the 2017 budget.
Action approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven, zero.
Item number 10 is action to accept the retirement of Garrison Almer from the Parks Department effective May 24th, 2017. I would like to say for the record, Gary's here tonight with his wife, so I know you probably saw him coming in, but.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary, he's here. I thank him for all his years of service, and he has a lot of knowledge about North Huntington, he's been here for many, many years, and he will be missed, so hopefully he will be happy in his retirement, so. And thanks for coming, because a lot of times people retire, and I don't think the board sees them again, so thank you for taking the time to come tonight to the meeting, so. That's an official action item for the board tonight, if anybody has any wishes.
Gary, I just want to say thank you, anytime we run into Parker, anything, it's all you and her, all we've done, and summer people, all we've done, excellent job, Parks and facilities, we've all been a one. Thank you. Thank you for your dedicated service. Thank you, Mrs. Almer, for putting that. Thank you, Gary, you did your job.
Gary, I also wanna echo what Dave said, I wanna thank you very much for your hard work, your caring. That's part of being an obligated employee, and you are a great employee. You think about the township, you think about the people in this township, and we're appreciative to you.
Thank you, Gary. Hi, Rich. All good, some bad? I'm jealous, Gary.
Gary, is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to thank the township.
This is probably your only time at a meeting to do something. What do you think?
Well, being nice, yeah. I'd like to actually thank past commissioners and commissioners today for being myself and our family, for being able to live here and make a living be here. It's been great. I've been born and raised in North Huntington. Fortunately, I'm going to move on. Better places, but different places. So I do want to thank everybody. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, most of you accepted, retired.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it seven zero.
That's the item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Any other further board comments?
Yeah, I have something with our questions we have for the civil circle position chief. Where we are, are we going to move on with that, or where are we at with that? Are the questions okay? The board members are...
I personally like people to review it. I don't like...
Okay, you're playing hard.
You are.
Anybody else have anything for the board on it?
I would like to thank Lieutenant Meniski for keeping an eye on Brownstown across, I see cars on Brownstown quite often, and I really appreciate it. And I talked to Mr. Shepherd concerning the light up at between four thirty and five thirty. Actually, the traffic, I don't know if they're just not coming up Brownstown now, but it's lessened a bit.
We took it out of coordination. It's coordinated with the green thirty signal, so it holds all the green time for center. So once we took it out of coordination, it gave more time to Brownstown. So we're watching it to see if that solves the problem temporarily. So we discussed it with Pendott and they agreed that would be the thing to start with.
Thank you.
So it works great.
Got any information on when it's going to be reopened?
June tenth or seventeenth.
June.
June.
Other further board comments?
To you today, Township Parks and Recreation Department is currently offering the Wild Flower Walking Towards Bradshaw Park. We've already begun a run through April twenty-ninth at ten thirty a.m. weather permitting. Please call the administration office to reserve space. Also, memorial bench dedication in honor of Warren Carter is rescheduled at Bradshaw Park on Thursday, April twenty-seventh. Again, hopefully the weather will be more cooperative then. Spring yard waste collection is scheduled during the following weeks, April fourth, April twenty-fifth, and May ninth, on your regular day of trash service. Leaves and yard waste must be placed in biodegradable bags and placed at the curb by six feet.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. Thank you, Cam.
I'm getting a phone call.
I have seen that.
So, May twenty-fourth.
May twenty-fourth. What do you want for dinner?
Drive through.
Yeah, right.
To the anthems.
And it's really in the back.
I just want to let you know this.
I feel like that's a waste of a lot of your black soap. I don't have that much, but it's going to be in a lull if you factor it in. So I mean, it's that there will be two lines. Who would know?
All right, well, good luck.
So this is another thing I'm sorry to get this out. So I realize only that we can do the child happiness of the person in this time, and there is a minimum requirement, which might unfortunately let them, we can go back on that. But why do you think they, you know, they are, those women, why is any of the women there, and maybe you guys talked about it in, looking out for people going forwards and they are in the front, going to the right. You know, like that would also have to be posted to send out cases of all of the properties that they are aware of. Because just because there's a minimum requirement, you can't just turn to the above. But we're out of luck. Why not just have an excerpt here, but don't pass it on and let them know? Because there's just a minimum requirement to look at or post it online, Facebook. I'll be on this over. You know, I feel like you, you know, if you sit there and you say, if this board has shots, you know, a lot of these, like, I'd like to understand the implications. I want to understand what's going on and saying, I'm going to be telling you, you know, I'm going to try to, I did, but it turns out that's just good business, you know? I just don't understand. I'm making decisions on this. And you know, the professionalism that I read in the minutes is so great. I mean, at one point they called it, oh my gosh, you know, like...
I think from the south, basically.
Yes. I mean, come on, you know, what, thirty-some thousand people, okay, so we're doing that backwards. It's just, I don't know, but it's just frustrating. People who are sensitive, it's, you know, to your point, you have to, it's totally, it does. I read, 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 I